Wow.
My Grove access.
Oh.
If we can do that while Larry's here, right after, right after what he has for the highway department.
Okay.
That way you can leave.
Yep.
And then that meeting in May, if we want to add that to the agenda too. Hoping to reschedule the last meeting in May. It's one of those five week months. I thought if we could bump it up a week.
Okay, and Myron Grove access.
I made. I mean, it's just the week. I can always.
All right, are we, are we ready?
Excellent.
Okay, well then I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic of America. One nation.
And to the people of this world. We're going to be interested for all.
A roll call.
Mokler.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Easy's out today and Hammond.
Here.
All right, conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Hearing none, we've got a few sets of minutes to approve. So we've got some additions. Oh, I'm sorry, agenda. Thank you. So we'll. We have three additions to the agenda. One is Myron's Grove access. The second is setting a May meeting date and the third is an MPA internship. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Do we need to strike one of them? Off the agenda?
Well, I guess, yeah, they're not here, so, so, and then we would, we.
Yeah, we're gonna take it off.
Yep, yep. So that would be the vacation of right of way in Burbank. Any other changes to the agenda?
I'll move to approve those changes, accept the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and now we'll look at minutes, and if you'd like, we can take them all together.
Move to approve. What was there, three, four sets of minutes?
There was. The last meeting, what was that, April 11?
Yep.
County and consolidated equalization boards from the 11th. The executive session on the 17th and the executive session on the 21st.
I'll move to accept all those minutes. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. So next item on the agenda, visitors to be heard, there any visitors to be heard? Okay. And so now we've got the right of way applications for Clay Royal Water.
Okay. I guess.
You got a lot of them.
There's nine of them, yeah. I guess Rod, he's already signed them, he recommends approval for all of them, so we have looked them over, there was one Travis was talking about that. They didn't write down an encasement that they were gonna do, but it says right there on the. Application that they have to encase it, so. I don't know what, what were you gonna do about that? Just amend it, add that, yeah, to add it on there. The other ones haven't listed how they're gonna do encasement, this one, the very first one on our list doesn't show an encasement.
And on each of the others, they had, they listed the diameter of both pipe and the encasement.
And on this first one, it's just. You know, the two inch pipe that they're only talking about.
Okay, so we'll amend, it's the section thirty six township ninety five Bethel. I think it's thirty second street.
Three.
So, do I have? With that one amendment?
Yes, with that one amendment.
Okay. Right. There's a motion and a second to approve nine rights of way, the first of which. Has to include an encasement that's not listed there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion, motion carries, and then we've got fuel quotes, yeah? All right, and it looks like it's a pretty clear. Recommendation, so that would be entertain a motion to. Accept the bid from Jerry Service for two ninety-nine a gallon of gas a haul.
Move to accept. Second.
So motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carries, so micro surfacing documents for signature, I think we've, have we already approved this?
You guys accepted the bid, but now this is the actual work document, yeah.
Okay, so, so I would entertain a motion to accept.
Authorized, authorized agreement to sign those documents, second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries, and then we can move on to the, see Myron's, Myron's Grove access.
Yep, so I got an email yesterday, the project is. Being terminated. The, the price of it came in way, way too high and nobody had money to. Fund the rest of it, it came in at six point nine million, I think.
This is the, this is the project.
That road, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I will forward that email to Carrie, so she can send it on to the rest of you, so you can read it. So.
That's like a mile and a quarter.
Mile and a half, it was.
Mile and a half, yeah. And that is a lot for.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's code for don't want to do it this year.
Well, no.
Not so much this year, it's just, it's gone, Rod thought it was, well. When they first did it, they thought that they weren't. That it wasn't gonna take as much to build the road as what it was, what it actually is going to take. And we weren't going to accept the road unless it was built to. The same standards as we built Saginaw.
Mm-hmm.
So. So they just, they terminated the project.
Well, that's good news.
Rod will be happy, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's too bad that it happened.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is too bad. That's, that's a lot of dust every summer.
Yeah. So that's all that I have on that one.
Okay. Um. All right, any, anything else from highways? Nope.
No.
All right.
Everything's good so far, no snow anyway.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, wait to jinx us.
Hopefully, we've got seven or eight months.
All right, Scott, your courthouse mechanical, electrical and HVAC project.
So I guess right to the points where they send a document that need to be signed in order to proceed. So I guess that's where we're at, and it requires your signature, I believe.
Yep.
So move to authorize chairman to sign the document, second.
The motion and a second, any discussion?
Any other changes or, or anything we need to know about that project at this point?
No. Just at some point, need to have the commissioners and the department heads sit down. Or what does, once we start getting a little more information from the contractor. What else can entail, you know? How difficult it's gonna be to maintain being open and having them in here and. Scheduling and there's just a lot of little nuances to work out that nobody really knows. Anything about this point, there's kind of up in the air, I figured when this is signed and I hear from Lynn, then. I'll start working with the contractor L and L. On this stuff and. Seeing what they're thinking and they can, what we're thinking and come up a plan of some kind.
I will be recording. On Wednesday nights, the annual meeting, Clay County Historical Society. On that project and I'm using. The lines that, that. That we've got from each of the contractors, both the courtroom, courtroom. Security upgrade grant and this particular project.
Does it make any sense to have a, an earlier meeting with a department that's? Just to give them a thirty thousand foot view of what's, what could possibly happen in their office and thinking about what they want to do.
That's, that's true, yeah, that's a good idea.
To happen to come to that day and go, well, this is what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
To visit early on.
Make it a little too way too if they had some specific.
And especially since there is a clause in the contract that says basically if the work is held up because of us. It will, you know, they, they, it will cost more, so, so we want to make sure that people, I mean, we may, there may be some people we need, we need to move temporarily elsewhere and, and, you know, we've, we've got resources and we can do that.
Those, those. Issues are even listed in the fine print on the architectural drawings, which nowadays there's almost no. Outside for pitch for contracts like this, they put everything and, and flip notes on the architectural drawings, but they are there in several spots in those, on those drawings.
I did a little. Allison will want to be part of, will want to have her part of that.
Who's that?
Kim Allison.
Okay.
She's. With the clerk, she's in charge of clerk of courts. She handles all that, and then Lexi, who's the, who's the top judge that tells the other ones, this is what you have to do?
Presiding Judge, Judge Garing.
Okay, so if we could get her.
Excuse me.
As part of that meeting sometime too, because.
That, that might be difficult with her schedule, but maybe zooming. Or something.
Which is fine, because they're gonna have to understand, because they've got their own projects. That's really going to affect them too, that it's gonna be the same thing, if they have any ideas.
And I think Kim would be able to help coordinate those things with judges' schedule. Because she's the, the first circuit administrator overall, the first circuit, so she, she would work with Judge Garing. Um, so all of this project will be done by April thirtieth and twenty twenty-four, is that right?
I don't know how. They're not gonna start till November, are they?
Well, that, that's what the contract says.
That it's gonna be done by April?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four.
April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
That's what the contract from L and L, or from the architect say.
And I was just a little, and, and my apologies, this was sent to me. Earlier by Carrie and I was. Just looking at doing last day or so, so I didn't ask anything additional, I mean, it looks good to you guys, looks good to me, but that's, that is one of the things I did know. Was April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and then there was some reference to some addenda and whatnot of what happens if. I mean, we're just not paying them then if it's not done within that timeframe, or usually there's a penalty.
That's what I was just gonna ask, is there a clawback if it's not the thirtieth, every?
There's, I don't think there's, I didn't see anything in there that was a clawback.
I think we're gonna want to put that in there. We usually have those on the other contracts where we have worked on, I mean, if they're, if it's supposed to be done by the thirtieth, because if there's no penalty. They've got no motivation.
I know they did discuss maybe being a little bit flexible in case of material lead times and stuff, so I don't know if that's why they didn't do that.
And we can, that, that can be written in there too.
That and the only other thing would just be. I don't know if we want to have any further discussion about contract negotiation executive session, but. If we do want some flexibility on our accounts. And I don't know that we will need it, I mean, I don't know, but. That may be the reason things were more flexibly written in this regard.
Dick, you have any thoughts on that?
Usually those are in one paragraph of that AIA one oh one document, I think it's the correct number. And I don't remember what that said in that part, I skimmed over that part apparently. But, yeah, we could, we could add something that gives some. Flexibility that if. If on proper documentation or evidence that. Because of. Material. Problems with obtaining material in a timely matter that we could allow. Commensurate. Lengthening of the contract. In other words, if they're waiting for materials for three months extra over what we would expect. Then they can document that, that we would extend the contract by three months. Does that sound like a reasonable, I've, I've done that sort of thing in the past. On the other end, the guy that. Had to provide the documentation and asked for an extension.
Can I see Lynn is on, I don't know, but I need to put you on the spot here, but just, you know, the only thing I noted was in section five point one point seven retainage. There was a reference to as per zero zero seven three zero zero supplementary conditions, and I just wasn't certain what those were.
Sure, yep, it's in the, it's in the specification booklet, it basically, it spells out, essentially, I think it's ten percent retainage and then. Five percent after substantial completion. So we can put that language directly in there if you'd prefer, I can, I can send that to you.
Do you, do you think that that addresses some of these concerns? About payment substantial completion and if things get delayed?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, one of the, I guess, first steps that we'll do with the contractor, once, once we, they get that notice to proceed is they'll start reaching out to their subs and get their subs under contract. And then we, we ask for, for them to submit a schedule, a project schedule, so. We can look at that and. My first initial discussions with him, he was comfortable with the schedule, I think most of the. Contractors were saying they, they have availability to start in August of this year, so. I think there's some comfortability there with the contractor, and then I guess if there are. You know, things that arise in terms of lead times or issues like that, you know, we, we can amend the, amend the contract and the, and the schedule, but. I guess I'm not sure what kind of. Stipulations you'd want to put in there for. Not being complete, I don't know if we're talking like full liquidated damages kind of thing, I think that gets a little bit. Tricky to enforce.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, I see everybody shaking their heads, no, no, that's not what we're about. I, I, I guess our, I.
I think Travis, Travis's question was more about, you know, how, how do we make sure that, you know, a year later, we're not still installing doorknobs and.
A year after completion date.
Yeah.
Actually, I was looking for liquidated damages, that's what, yeah, because we've gotten into this situation before. To where things weren't happening and. They were wanting paid and nothing, it wasn't being completed and we didn't have any recourse. We were at the mercy of the contractor.
Lynn, any suggestions to address that?
I believe there is some. A clause in there when, where it does talk about substantial completion, they do have like sixty days to complete. You know, items that are on a punch list. So I can look and see what that language is and then the. The other piece of that, there is a warranty period, so you know, your, your mechanical equipment. Things like that, everything from. That substantial completion are warranted for a year under the contract, so. You know, not that they have a year to come back, but they do have to finish things on that punch list within a reasonable amount of time. But then there's that, you know, one year warranty walk where if things are, you know. Issues still coming up or not being resolved, there's, there's time in there that the contractor needs to. To repair or fix any issues, a lot of times it's. I think mechanical issues with controls or things like that, so.
And then what, what happens after that time elapses if there are still problems? Or if things, you know, I mean, I mean, supposing we, we, I mean, we've, we've. Retained our five percent, but there's still stuff not done. And they're not doing it.
Yeah, I can look and see what the, what the language is, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know in a recent project, we've ran across where if, if something's not satisfactory to the owner or wasn't completed. The owner could reduce the contract amount. So that they can go, you know, get it fixed by somebody else or, or another party to come in and fix it. To, the way they. The way they want it done.
Yeah, fix it or finish it.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I can look at that, I think that's in the, the A one oh one, where it talks a little bit more about that.
Okay, I think that would be really helpful. Yeah?
So, so do we want the, the supplementary conditions listed?
Yeah, they should be, they're part of the, the con, or they're part of the contract document, so they're, they're referenced in the specifications.
Okay.
So. Yeah, if they're not referenced in there, we certainly can make a point to, to include them.
That would be great. And so, if, any other questions about the contract?
Say, Lynn, this is Scott, so who is the project manager on this job?
For L and L.
Uh, well. Is there, is any oversight from you guys on this project or?
Oh, yep, yep, we'll be, we'll be involved, so it'll be myself and then we have a construction administration. I guess specialist in our office, Ron Gribble, so he will be. Involved throughout construction as well.
So if we run into such an issue. You'd be there in our corner, correct?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Put no strong arm, put the strong arm on it to get it done.
Absolutely.
Hey.
So we don't want to sign this then until those updates are made to it.
Correct, yep, the contract's a draft right now. The notice to proceed, is that what you're talking about Travis?
Yep.
The notice to proceed, I think is, is more of a, lets the contractor start reaching out to his subs and getting some of those things underway. So, and then, and then we can continue to work out the, the contract negotiations.
Okay.
So that's all we really need to do today is the notice to, to proceed?
Yes, yep.
I'll make that motion to sign the. Notice to proceed. Notice to proceed. I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to sign the notice to proceed, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, and then we've. We've with the, the agenda item on the Hayes estate's been withdrawn, so we are doing equalization.
Just one, a couple other quick things on this MEP, I did do a little legwork on what, if we had to move office offsite. What that cost might look like. Found a place in Omaha you can rent office furniture from, I believe it was like sixteen hundred bucks for three months. For desk and chair, I. Went out to Brady out here, that's a dollar square foot for retail space. I didn't check with the outfit that owns the one out by Walmart, but that kind of gives you an idea, you know. Sixteen hundred feet or three thousand feet is what they had. And I talked to Pearson Solutions, so there would be no problem. Like with the treasurers moving off. Getting them all set up so they can stay on the state. Technology. And still be able to do their job. So I did a little legwork there to kind of see what that would look like.
Nice.
And then the other point is, uh. We're responsible for the abatement or whatever. For the lead or the asbestos. Fortunately, there's only like one place where we have to make a small cut where there's asbestos. But the lead paint, obviously, there's quite a bit of it, but I talked to a firm out of Sioux Falls that does it. And they say that the state requires them to paint an encapsulant on the wall on both sides. And that's, that's it for that, but there's be quite a few areas they'd have to do. And that's one thing we have to move on and get done before. L and L can come in and start punching holes and what have you, so we have that yet to get work into the schedule. The gentleman I talked to said he, said they're booked up, but this is a small enough job they could squeeze it in. So. And I don't know what that cost looks like yet, I have to have further conversation with him. Get his hourly rate and try to get an idea.
And that's on the asbestos?
Excuse me, lead. Yeah. Here's a question.
We need to have a contract this side.
Lynn?
Can you tell us? What was that question, sorry?
Yeah.
When, when do we need to have this contract signed then to proceed forward or? Or is the notice good enough or?
I think, well, the, the notice I think is good for, for now, I, I don't remember if there's anything within. I think it's the bid laws that stated something like notice to proceed within maybe thirty days. But I don't remember if there's anything in there for, for, you know, getting under contract within a certain amount of time.
So sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a little bit of time and, and I haven't sent. The draft to L and L yet, I wanted to get the county's input and, and language all in there that was needed before I send it to them, so. Once we do send it to them, I'll, I'm sure that they might have a little bit of time, they'd want to review it and. They have any questions or comments.
All right, thanks Lynn.
Yep.
So I get, guess, you know. If you're all in favor of having that meeting, maybe let me know or whatever, a timeframe. I can reach out to the department heads. With that meeting date, see if we can pull it together. So.
Sounds good, one, one place to take a look is, you know, maybe talk to the city about their space, because I, the last I knew. And it could have changed by now, this was probably a year ago, they had a substantial amount of space there. That was, was unused on the lower level, so, I mean, it's the basement, but it's for a brief period of time, so it's not, you know, not unreasonable and it's a public building.
Gotcha.
Easy to find.
Okay.
And we might, we might get a better price.
I'm sure. Okay, I can look into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other? Business with Scott? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
You can't do the equalization until nine forty-five.
Until nine forty-five.
Thirteen minutes.
Okay, we got fifteen minutes.
Got a beacon contract though.
I'm, I'm sorry? The beacon contract, yeah, let's do that.
And I did forget to email it to, to Carrie to send out to you guys, but it's just their standard contract, what we're trying to do is. It's for the taxes from T Tech, so they can upload them into Beacon, T Tech is not ready to do that yet, but Beacon has given us a, a number. Three thousand five twenty-eight, it's their standard contract and they'll honor it. Till whenever, but the price is gonna go up if we don't sign the contract now. If you just. And Alexis looked at it. If you want to just.
Oh, each one is a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's. Right. So when Alexis looked at it and it was.
I mean, it's more like, I don't really know that we have much room for negotiation, we had a good working relationship with them, I said, even, you know, one of the standard terms that I like to. Jurisdiction here, you know, any litigation would be resolved by Coda, I don't know that they're gonna agree to that, their company's out of Indiana, there's a reason they have Indiana in there, and if we don't really see problems. They can update terms on the regular, I mean, there's a site link there and they just need to give us ten days notice, but as long as we're providing our side of things, moving up, we need to do.
And we've done other projects with them before that we haven't been ready for them, but we've paid them to get a better price. Because as you know, everything's. Because as you know, everything goes up in price.
All the time. Unfortunately, yeah, it's shocking.
I'll make the motion to have the chairman sign the. Do we call it beacon or do we call it Schneider geospatial contract?
Well, it's, yeah, it's geospatial is who the owner of the beacon company is. Or a beacon add-on maybe.
Right.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Schneider geospatial contract. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion, motion carries. Should we do? Uh, well, vouchers were, I think some of them came in this morning and I I didn't have time to. To look at them, so.
I have mine on the screen, so I'm just gonna look down through those. We do have.
Yeah, sure, we've got a, we've got.
We've got a guy without a screen today, though.
I was in a jury thing, I didn't.
We can share.
They they made resolution and dismissed us before. That was even.
That was a quick one.
So I've got a question on the vouchers. And it doesn't have anything to do with the payment, but so does the city pay to go to the landfill? Since we were paying to go to the landfill?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't need.
I would assume so.
But yeah, we should, we should confirm that it's a public authority and the public authority doesn't have any money unless everybody pays in.
But no, we're paying ourselves. That's what I'm wondering. Oh, we own it or the public owns it, but.
Public owns it and then the the way that the way the public authorities get their money is by charging fees to the constituent governments.
So I was just, I was just making, wondering if the city's coming since we are.
Oh, I can't, I I would be shocked if they weren't, but I I'll be willing to check on it. So we all done with vouchers?
Move to approve the vouchers.
Second.
The move to approve in a second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Right. Motion carries. And let's see, what else can we do?
May meeting.
Yeah, so let's talk about um, May meeting. Carrie, you had a proposal that makes a lot of sense.
I'll bring out my calendar here so I can see the dates. Um, so we're scheduled to meet on May thirtieth, which is the day after Memorial Day. Um, since May is one of those five Tuesday months. Um, I'm going to be on vacation and Nicole's certainly capable of taking minutes and she would be happy to do that, but. I was thinking with the holiday in there too, it might just be easier to move that meeting to the twenty-third instead of the thirtieth. I don't know what your thoughts were on that.
So. Just just for me and, you know, one person out here isn't gonna, can still get a quorum together, but I I. Will be driving down Paso on that day, so it actually probably be hard for me to um even zoom in, so I'd probably have to miss, but like, you know, I haven't missed any yet.
I don't think you might have had a. You're okay?
Okay.
So do we change the meeting date?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah. Do we need to have a thought on that? I don't think so.
Yeah, you know, we need to make it formal, so I'll. I'll make the motion that we reschedule the May thirtieth meeting to May twenty-third at nine o'clock.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hey.
Sure you send out like a lot of reminders.
I will do that and I'll make sure I have that on the website in advance too, so that people know.
Yeah. Yeah, that should work. So we still have. A bit of time.
Was there one more thing we added to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, so we, I got a phone call from um, uh, the um. The Masters in Public Administration Program, they have a a student intern who's a mass. She's a student, she's had a year of training in. Uh, public administration and is looking for a summer internship. It would be about a hundred fifty hours. Um, and um, uh, you know, usually these internships are project based so that they actually get to learn something. Um, and we we get the benefit of of what of what they're learning, so. Um, I thought I would ask all of you if you had some ideas. I I I had, I had a few few ideas. Um, you know, one was um, doing kind of a benchmarking study of um. Of similar sized counties in the region. Um, and to look at things like, you know, grants, what kinds of grants are they getting? Um, what kinds of programs do they have? Um, what kinds of revenue streams, parks? Um, you know, innovations, in other words, what what can we learn from, oops, sorry. Uh, from similar size, um, uh, similar types of governments in in the region. Um, that was, that was one thought. Another thought was um, uh, to create a template for us for a strategic planning program so that. You know, uh, we would look ahead a few years, maybe a three-year timeframe and. Think about what are the most important um, challenges facing. Um, the county and, you know, it's sort of a chance to step back from the day-to-day work and think. About, you know, what's what's coming up, what's what's. And and then to involve citizens in that as well and to plan a series of meetings. I mean, I've I've noticed that. Um, county government is probably the the lowest um, uh, profile governments and. You know, it it it's actually pretty amazing how how well we do with how little we have and. You know, involving citizens a little more in um, understanding the. Um, the challenges, but also hearing, hearing from them about what what matters to them most. And, you know, on on the one hand, we all know people will talk about taxes and that's that's fine, but if you. If you frame it correctly, uh, it it can be really helpful. Um, and so I've done strategic planning with governments around South Dakota, uh, you know, during during my career and. I think, I I think governments were largely, you know, pretty, pretty happy with 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 that, so. The idea would be a student could do something like, you know, plan, um, you know, just plan it, help find a facilitator. Um, uh, you know, I identify the kinds of questions a facilitator should ask, you know, identify public meeting sites. Um, and and basically plan it so that it's like a, almost like a cookbook for us. And it would be something that we would tackle after budget was done. Um, probably, probably in the fall, but it would incorporate, for example, Wakanda and Irene and, you know, the. Parts of uh, parts of the county that we don't often talk to and sometimes don't even know that they belong to us. Um, so, so anyway, the, but you might have have other other ideas as well. About what a, what a uh, high-level intern could do. And department heads may have ideas as well, but but I think project-based stuff works better than um.
Be a paid internship.
Well, it, you know, they they get credit for it and they actually have to pay for that credit. Um, and. Yeah, yeah.
If that would be something we'd have to discuss also.
Yeah, yeah, so a a nice thing to do would would be to offer something like two thousand bucks. Um, you know, as a stipend, that that is a salary, just offer two thousand dollars and.
Would they be able to do, I mean, just recently what we went through. One of the projects be like a salary study.
Yes, absolutely.
Instead of us scrambling.
Yeah.
Minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, that's a, you know, a a market study is really nice because one of the reasons. Um, you know. Governments lose. Staff is because they're not in line. Um, you know, with other other governments and so having a a market study. Um, I, you know, one one government where he was chief of staff, we did a market study and. We found out, for example, that some of our librarians were on food stamps and we, after the market study, we unilaterally raised. You know, raise their salaries, so they they had a decent, a decent wage. I mean, people just thought, oh, you know, like they're all. Need to earn a lot of money, but so I, yeah, so so that's a. That would be a great idea and it probably wouldn't take the student that wanted to do. So we could probably do do that in conjunction with another. Another study.
If we hired that out to a private company, it would cost us.
Yep.
Our association is working on a salary survey right now for the counties in South Dakota. But you could incorporate USC and, you know, some of those other employers in the area that wouldn't be in a part of that survey.
Yep.
Is this somebody they already have in mind that they would have point to us or do we go through interviews?
No, no, that that, so they have, they have somebody in mind who is between her first and second year. And has already taken like a. Uh, performance evaluation in the public sector, um, so she will have been trained in some of these things I. I I. Threw out a few suggestions to the faculty member and he he liked all of them. Um, he said, yeah, that any, any of those, and I'm sure that a market-based salary study would also be. Be right in the ballpark. It's what they want their students to learn, so in some sense, we 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 would get something at a discount rate for us. And at the same time, you know, the student would uh, would would be getting some. Some support to pay the tuition for the privilege of helping us.
This person's in the GRV then? Governmental Research Bureau or?
No, no, she's, she's, I I don't know if she is or not, but she's a public administration student who's required to do an internship.
Yeah. So she is. Actually, her master's level or?
Master's level. Yep, and so she's had one complete year of master's training, so she's had the core. You know, so she's done, you know, budgeting and performance evaluation and policymaking and.
So are we going to, is is this person going to be required to work out of the courthouse or will they be able to work offsite?
Yeah, you know, I was thinking about that. They could work offsite. Um, but if we could find a desk here, I think it'd probably be better for the student, I mean, to get a sense of what goes on here.
That's, that's the problem, that's what I was.
Right, right, yeah, we would, we we'd have to do some serious looking. I mean, I I don't know. Where we could find a desk, we might be able to find a desk here for, you know, in this room.
Spare jail cell or something.
That would be something.
So is this something that we would require them to be in our meetings and also?
No, 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 no. Um, they would, they would do it, they would do a presentation at the end to us. Um, and so that, so that they would, the work, they would have to give us a written work product. For every project they had and then um, they would do a full presentation to us. That would be, and they, you know what, they're, they could certainly come if they wanted to, but it wouldn't be part of their paid.
It could be useful for them at the, at the. Uh, the origin of a project or scoping of project to give us a, give us a. A scoping report. Oh, and in listening to that, we may adjust that. We may decide that, well, that's a good idea, but here's a little, another idea that you might want to toss into it as far as. Adjusting your scope of work and and methods. And then. For that particular project, have a completion report at the end. And please hold it to seven minutes or whatever.
Yeah, any, any, I I mean, my favorite products are the market salary study and the benchmarking. I don't know if.
Yeah, could be a good. Good move.
So with the MPA, what do they end up, I mean, where, what is the career that they would probably end up with?
I want. I've got, I've got an MPA.
So, well there. Wasn't the original.
Or third level below the governor in state government. Which was my terminal. By the time I left, I was. Really fourth level down.
But I mean, what did that entail? What did your?
Oh, I I did, uh, for our agency, I built parts of the budget. I. Uh, helped figure out. Who to hire to get uh, certain projects done. I did, um, I arranged with universities and in in other states and in our state. To have projects done by graduate students like this. Uh, I had. Or projects from University of of uh, Wisconsin, for for instance, to do things that were of great benefit to our state. And uh. The guys at the Wisconsin Geological Survey were. Uh, forthcoming and coming up with good projects for skips to do that could have helped Wisconsin. But uh, I came up with a. A package where we. Pay for their. In-state transportation room and board while they're in the field. Uh, support for them to. Uh, uh, they provided all the instrumentation, all the expertise, their, their. Uh, super supervisor, the guy that. Uh super uh supervisor, the guy that that was their main teacher, main main professor. His expertise and in guiding it to ensure that we had a good project. So I've done this very thing that we're proposing.
So is this, would it, for this person, would it be helpful, like on the jail project? To just sit in on those, just to learn how the process goes or is that, am I missing?
Yeah, we want it to be benefiting us too.
Yeah, and and we, and they want that too. I mean, in other words, what 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 the university wants. And I, I mean, I was the internship director for the MPA program for a while. And what 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 they're really looking for is a deep experience with government. And a familiarity of what it means to work in the public sector. So um and 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 that, you know. Grad graduates have gone on to, I mean, there's one guy who's way, way up there. He might even be the director now of um. The um Department of Homeland Security budget for the feds. Um got one, one graduate who's over in um California. She's the, I think, deputy director of welfare services for the state. She's, you know, they 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 move all over. A lot of them are city managers in South Dakota. I mean, USD graduates.
City managers in South Dakota.
City, yeah, city administrators, yeah.
So we've got city graduates in the program that are all over the Midwest, for instance.
And and they, a lot of them, a lot of them moved to DC and, you know, become, yeah, it's 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 pretty impressive what what they do. Um I I did the better part of an MPA, but it was a Masters in Criminal Justice um with a concentration in public administration. And I mean, wow, it it made a real difference when I, you know, when I worked in government, having that background. So they learn accounting, they learn um, you know, budgeting, they learn fiscal policy. Yeah, and they're smart. You know, you you don't get into one MPA program.
I don't want it to to uh end up uh uh maybe being the exception to that rule, but.
Yeah, alright, so, so so what Carrie suggested was that we wanted to go ahead with this. What we would do is um transfer. Um two thousand dollars from um contingency to the commissioner's budget. And it would be paid out as a stipend um to the student.
And these should be, we should uh, we should specify. The projects and the expected uh uh receivables that we will get from the projects.
Will these hundred and fifty hours just be completed in the summer then?
Yep.
Do we pay at the end of it?
Yes, stipend usually happens at the end. She'll, she would be here for about a month. And I think what we do is invite her to meetings and if she had time, she'd come.
Alright, well, I see a lot of nods. Do we need a motion? Yep. Yep, I uh I moved to uh. To create this internship position uh for an MPA student from USD and to offer a two thousand dollar stipend. I'll second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Does this sound like something that'll work for for us? Administration-wise, Carrie?
I think so. I don't see why not.
Alright, then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And are we at?
Okay, so you have to reconvene the direct, the equalization meeting. I don't know how, if you need to go out of this and go into that, because that's a different board.
We have to go out, right?
Yeah, just like we do with ditch board.
Yeah.
Make a motion to reconvene is the. Board of Equalization.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to reconvene as the Board of Equalization. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I know.
And I don't believe Tim is on. Do you want to share your screen, Mia? And to to start out with, your papers are just the same as the other day, the laws and stuff that we go go by and and this and. The different information that we presented, but then after um. Mister uh that falls investments, we tabled um appeal number ten. To go back and look, he is in the wetlands. Um. Part of his is in the wetlands. Which is um. Not the whole property, but it is. Page twelve. Shows the yellow shows what's in the wet. What is listed as being in the wetlands, which is definitely does. Show all the wet areas, the the red lines. You can see the red lines are the parcel description, which. If you turn the next page, the parcel that we're talking about is also outlined. And so, and then the page fourteen, we did adjust those trees that are at the very top. Of that. I don't know if you can see that. We adjusted those twenty-five percent like we did the rest of them and. Which it because that area is not in the wetlands. The wetland adjustments. That are the pieces that are adjusted in the wetlands were adjusted before. Those adjustments are, anybody in the wetlands, if they had a floodplain, they would have that adjustment or a wetlands. They would already uh a designated wet area. They would already be, have been adjusted to that. So and then on the. And there was, when it was originally sent, sent out, the W O soil, there was um two tenths of an acre. That was listed as crop, but it's W O is definitely a pasture crop um soil. So that was changed. And so with those adjustments from one eighty-nine, four oh five, I'm recommending. We change it to one eighty-eight, three fifty. And I have talked to Tim, I can't think of his last name at the moment, and. He wasn't really okay with it, but. He seemed to understand the reasoning behind the increase.
I'll make the motion to accept the Director of Equalization's recommendation.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and second to accept the Director of Equalizations. Adjustment. There any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and the other one that we uh. Um tabled was um Marilyn Sweets and. After looking at it, um and Travis did go out and look at it and he, when we talked on the phone yesterday, it pretty much. Sounded like we were talking of the same, what he saw out there was what we had adjusted. Um page through, page one, two shows the whole parcel outlined with the usage and the soils in it. And page three shows. Shows the west side, I. What did I say, thirteen hun- I don't remember how many feet that was, but you can see that that's all being farmed. And actually, um Travis said that piece. Because it's way back, there's no way we can drive back there. That it is, it is a crop soil, but we adjusted that twenty-five percent because it is not being used for that. And the same way. Anything in that. Blue line, we adjusted twenty-five percent above. If it already was adjusted as a wetland, it now has a um six uh. Thirty-five percent adjustment, as you can see on. Page four. So what I am reckoning, it went from seventy-six, four fifty-nine. And with the, excuse me, the adjustments, it's going to sixty-six, three forty-eight. And I did talk to Mars- Marcia, her Marilyn's daughter yesterday, and her mother is in agreement with that. And I do have an email back from that.
So I'll make the motion to accept the Director of Equalization's recommendation.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second um to accept the Director of Equalizations. Um assessment. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Now you have to adjourn the equalization meeting.
Move to adjourn, equal, the, yeah, Board of Equalization.
Second.
Hey, uh there's a motion and a second to adjourn Board of Equalization. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are back in our regular meeting.
Thank you for going out and looking at that, Travis. Any. Because that's exactly what you saw, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, we need the binders back.
Alright, um so the last um item on the agenda is um the appointment of the state's attorney. And Director of Equalization. Um so why don't we take them one at a time? Would you like to make a motion?
On to appoint the Director of Equalization. My second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, we're, we're delighted um that you applied and we're delighted to uh to appoint you.
I want to thank you guys for the time and the opportunity and I'm really excited to see what we can do for the county.
Yeah, and we're, we're delighted to be able to work with you. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Congratulations. Alright, so uh appointment of the state's attorney. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Michael Smith, the state's attorney, effective. June first or? That was my question, dude. Does he need to be appointed? Are you? Are you resigning like at five o'clock on the thirty-first or are you?
Uh effective May thirty-first, though. I mean, I think for a practical sake, you're you're fine saying June first because. I mean, business transaction.
Yeah, she's uh business ends at five, but she'll probably have to work until midnight. Cover the clock like in the legislature.
Well, there is times that that happens. That's why I'm, that's why I was wondering.
I understand.
I mean, I think that would be facilitated just through conversation of things. There won't be any court proceedings or anything that needs to be done before people get sworn in on the first. So I think we're in good shape.
Okay. There's no issues. It becomes, was it twenty-second or something he was talking about coming early? See a little overlap.
Yeah, I I think what that that's probably a.
That's just.
A separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna have to work that through administratively and then take care of it separately. I I mean, I I think you're right, David's. We're, we're, because we're gonna need to pay him before he's appointed state's attorney, but we appoint him state's attorney on June first, which is when. Power shifts.
If you guys are amenable, we can have a conversation with Mike about um, you know, probably like a deputy state attorney position. And I can look into, you know, make that, I can facilitate some things about swearing in. Just because I could assume it, we we can talk more about that, but definitely to have that transition timeframe of communication. I'm excited to be able to have have an opportunity to do that. I didn't know if that would, if that would happen, so that's great. But, yeah, that's awesome.
Alright, so we have a motion, we have a second. Wait, oh, second, okay.
My question kind of led into discussion.
Thank you, thank you.
We, we didn't. July first.
July one.
Yes. Um as I think it was in, I think that was listed in the offer for employment.
It was.
So refer back to that.
Yeah. Alright, so now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So yeah, I do. I think we're in agreement for him starting. He wants, I think the twenty-second was his day. And he's got a, it doesn't matter when he starts. Apparently, you've got to um work a month before you're eligible for insurance. So it'll be July first before he's eligible.
And I'll visit with him. I have something on my calendar for the twenty-second, but um so I'll visit with him. It's Monday, the twenty-third and twenty-second or. But I'm I'm good with whatever. I'm sure there are a lot of new person paperwork and things that you can file, even if I'm not. Here from a transition standpoint.
So if he comes on, just say the twenty-second. Do we just, I mean, you call, you're gonna call him a deputy, but the pay? Do we just start him at what we offered and then he just moves forward? So there's no adjusting or anything?
And and so we'll have to. Do some kind of temporary employment um. Salary measure.
We can talk to him and make sure, you know, that that's the date what he wants to do.
Great.
Very appreciative, very excited. Thank you, guys. I mean, he's gonna be a great state attorney, so. Good work to you all.
Alright, um let's see, um any building project updates or nope? Um joint jurisdiction?
No, we did not have a meeting last Thursday. Uh some. Personal conflict issues, uh but we are meeting again uh this coming Thursday. The small special uh joint jurisdiction committee.
And then we have a joint one with the with the city, right, on the fourteenth of May? Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
Whatever that Monday is, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's the correct date.
Alright, any further business to come before us?
I mean, I just have a division of service for. For quota action, but but I need you to sign.
Okay. Alright. Move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.